Calling to order, the September 3rd, City Council Meeting 2025. Please stand, and I'm going to refer to Mr. Jim Hartalk to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will now call the roll.
Councilmember Hood, absent. Councilmember Iwano?
Here.
Councilmember Luke?
Here.
Councilmember Luther?
Here.
Councilmember Norris?
Here.
Councilmember Patel?
Here.
Councilmember Sutel?
Here.
Councilmember Westy?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have seven out of eight councilmembers present this evening. Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Patel. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to table Bill 6500.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Westy, seconded by Councilmember Sutel to table Bill Number 6500 for this evening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Bill Number 6500 is tabled for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further changes, amendments? Again, I see none, all in favor of tonight's amended agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Next item on the agenda for this evening is Public Comments. I see no public comment cards.
Mayor.
There is one. Okay, thank you. Okay, please come forward, Ms. Fisher. State your address to the city clerk, if you would.
Hi. Um, Mayor, you know that I can't say my name, my last name, or my address due to having problems with the ongoing stalker? So I can't, I prefer not to, thank you. Can you hear me?
We have a record here.
Okay, so you know who I am. Okay, um, first of all, that's a lot of land that you guys are proposing to fill up, not with soil, or trees, or things like that, which I would consider clean. It is going to be also waste, no matter what you say about it, it's going to be trash on a floodplain. Now, are we expecting the flood to happen in a hundred years, and we're going to take care of it by then? Are we going to see it roll down the river like the asphalt plant? I don't believe that anything like that should be on a floodplain by the river and that much land on top of it, and it's going to be built up high, too. Then that will cause problems with people which are lower than that level, and they could possibly flood, too. And, like I said, a hundred-year floods don't mean it's going to be in a hundred years. I think it was asphalt plant two years, when I didn't want that to go happen, and that one's down the river. And that is our drinking water, people. That's our future. That is, that's our legacy, that we're going to have recorded, each and all of our names, that we did that. And I don't want to be, I don't want to be recognized that I did that. I want to be recognized that we were smart enough not to do something like that. I think we already should have learned our lesson with the toxic waste site, other waste sites, and other things. Let's not keep on doing the same mistakes. Why are we trying to cause a future problem? And I don't want to give our neighbors down the river all the trash. I would rather give them good things and not something which is bad for the whole environment. And by the way, it goes to the ocean, if anybody doesn't know. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I see no further cards. Next item on the agenda is the Approval of the Minutes from the August 20th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther to approve the City Council Minutes from August 20th, 2025. Any changes? I see none. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke?
You already did that.
Okay. Roll, uh, not roll call, but voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I see there's a, like, Councilmember Iwano?
I just wanted to let you know I'd be abstaining.
You weren't present.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. So we have six ayes and one abstention. The Minutes are approved for August 20th, 2025. Next item on the agenda is Appointments, Presentations, and Proclamations. First, we have Mr. Steve Trippi from Sickich regarding the 2024 City of Bridgeton Audit. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having us here and having a continued confidence in Sickich to do your audit. I wanted to take special thanks to Kevin Bookout and Christine Bodis and the chief, particularly the chief, for getting some contracts together for us that were related to our audit. First, I'd like to go through the Board Report. I'm not going to spend too much time on the first letter, other than to let you know that in relation to the audit and all the qualifications that go with performing an audit and management's cooperation, that everything was in order, and we received full cooperation. I'd like to go to page five and just briefly cover the correcting adjustments that were made. The chief provided us with certain contracts, as did Christine, to issue software technology arrangement contracts, which we had to start doing last year, but we didn't do it last year because the dollar amount wasn't significant enough, but it's significant enough this year, and it has to be recorded because it's related to long-term debt. And we recorded some pension liability and depreciation related to the Internal Service Fund. And then, we also, in the current year, implemented GASB-101, which we were originally recording compensated absences for vacation, but the GASB-101 required us to implement it for, also for sick time. So, that's a long-term debt issuance, again, which the GASB is paying a lot of attention to currently. They want to make sure that those things are there, and they're present, and they're clear for users of your financial statements, so. Management Letter, page six. We did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses related to the controls at the City of Bridgeton. We did have some comments, some of them you're familiar with because we keep repeating them annually. So, comment number one is related to internal financial reports being produced a little bit more timely for the council to make decisions. It's in accounting, having that historical data, you know, within a couple of months after it's been recorded is, becomes very important, particularly when you're operating with a budget. So therefore, we recommend some procedures be implemented to increase the ability to report that a bit more timely. We noted previously in the City Charter and Code that Section 101 indicates the court should provide monthly reporting to the council, and we also indicated that the escrow funds should not be commingled with other funds or separate bank accounts. Those are still ongoing issues. We also continue to talk to you about having your accounting policies and procedures updated to where you're currently at. It's a good idea to revisit that. Not, you know, we do that for you. If you would like us to do that, it would be a separate engagement. Currently, we've been doing that for Regis Commission, which governs, you know, a lot of the police communications that are going on throughout the area and whatnot. Escrow deposits continue to be outstanding for sometimes in excess of 20 years. Those can be turned over to the State Treasurer's Office, who we suggest you look at that a little bit strongly and maybe consider following up and let that person or that company make a claim to get their money recovered because they, you know, it could be, they may be dead, but they may have descendants that may be entitled to that money. In the current year, we have a new comment. We were looking, every year we look at journal entries, and we noticed that some of these journal entries were just being performed by one person. Proper procedures require that you have at least two people looking at them, and certainly it's not the person who enters them who can approve them. You just want to make sure that, you know, those journal entries, somebody's looking over somebody else's shoulder. That's a proper component of internal control. And I just want to make mention that this was mainly because you lost somebody in the accounting department who provided that function, and we didn't adapt to that and incorporate procedures to make sure somebody else was looking at it when Christine was doing them. So it's not a fault of anyone in particular, it's just a fault of circumstance. Next, I'd like to cover the Audit Report, if there's no questions about those comments. Okay. I'd like to turn to page one of the Audit Report, and I'm just going to briefly not cover all three pages of it, I just want to direct you to the second paragraph, which our opinion is that these financial statements are unmodified or of a clean opinion, which is the best opinion you can get on your financial statements, so. Would like to cover changes, then, to the financial statements. If I could ask you to turn to page five and six, which is your statement of net position. Just some significant changes. Some of them I'll give you a brief explanation to, and some of them, it's just notable more than anything else. Cash and investments increased $256,000 over last year. That's mainly just operating income that will do that for you. Receivables decreased $265,000, so that's related to grants receivable. I will also talk about that when we talk about your income statement. Restricted cash and investments decreased $560,000, and a significant portion of that is related to TIF revenues that decreased $390,000 for the current years, and you had an increase in debt payments of $81,000. And those are, those cash balances are restricted for the TIF, and so therefore, if you don't have sufficient revenues to maintain the balance, it's going to decline. Capital assets, which are noted on page 28, increased $67,000. What we had was we had $4 million in construction and progress added, which consisted of three freightliner trucks and upstates to Gentry Park, land improvements of $1.86 million, which notably were Harmon Estates and Boston Farms and Matthews Park. Additional various vehicles and machinery additions, and the addition of software-based technology. These increases are offset by a $3.87 million in depreciation charges that netted it to $67,000. So your deferred inflows on the pension, those are related to benefit payments, they increased $946,000. So we're going to expect increased benefit payments coming out of the pension next year. Accounts payable on page six, relatively unchanged. The accrued expenses increased $119,000 for accrued wages. Deposits decreased $293,000. Unearned revenue and accrued interest were relatively unchanged. Long-term debt decreased $2.36 million, that's on page 29. Part of that is $1.58 million payment for the SOB bonds and the $760,000 increase in TIF financing, and $200,000 decrease in debt premium and discounts. The pension liability decreased $600,000 due to investment returns, and your deferred inflows are relatively unchanged related to lease liabilities and the pension. Next, I'd like you to turn to page seven, and we're going to discuss the Statement of Activities. First, I'll cover the expenses. Overall, these increased $1.13 million, mainly in the general government area, where we had $563,000 of an increase, of which $242,000 was related to insurance costs, and $163,000 were way, the two wages and other salary-related costs. Public safety costs increased $635,000, of which $530 were wages and related costs, and the range was spread across several other cost categories. Revenues decreased overall $1.762 million. Now, that might sound surprising, but actually, it's really related to the next topic, which is the intergovernmental revenues. We had the ARPA funds we had for quite some time, and we finally spent them last year, so that's $1.53 million of your decrease. Operating grants were relatively unchanged, as were property taxes. Mentioned earlier, the TIF districts decreased about $390,000, and franchise and use taxes decreased $37,000, and that was mainly due to a one-time lawsuit that many of the cities in this area filed against Charter that was finally settled. The money was finally paid out, and we were finally able to recognize that as revenue. The last thing I'd like to discuss, if you have no questions there, would be, we had two adjustments to the previous financial statements, which are on page 48. Our previous net position ended with about $77 million. And for the current year, we implemented GASB-101, which I spoke to earlier, where we put the sick time in. So that resulted in an adjustment that went backwards of $328,000, which decreased the balance. Then we had a $193,000 increase for an air correction for health insurance costs that were included in accounts payable and expenses in the previous year that were really related to 2024 expenses. We also had an increase in the subordinated, $1.108 million. We contacted the bond council to determine whether that debt was really belonging to the city any longer. We realized that in the debt agreements, that your commitment to paying the debt had expired in 2022. So Christine put us in contact with the bond council, and they said that is no longer a debt of the city, so that subordinated TIF debt was removed from your statements, which resulted in a $1.1 million gain. So, any questions?
I don't see any lights. I think you did a great job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you next year. Next item under Presentations, we have a presentation by the EPA regarding Westlake Landfill and Update. Mr. Tom Mayer, who is the EPA Remedial Project Manager, is here with us, along with Jessica Evans. She is the EPA Community Involvement Project Person, Manager. Okay. Mr. Mayer.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, for giving us the opportunity tonight to give you a quick update on the progress we're making at the Westlake landfill site and some of our next steps. I know you have a full agenda, so I will try to keep this brief. You can go to the next slide. So I'm just going to do very, very short background, just to get us all up to speed, and then kind of what we're doing right now and where we're going. Go ahead to the next slide. Just to give you a little orientation on the site, you've probably seen some of this before. This is a map that we released in January earlier this year that kind of defines the different operable units we have at the site. Our operable unit one deals with the radioactive material at the Westlake landfill, and that is visualized on this map by the green outlined hatched areas. And the operable unit two is the rest of the landfill areas that do not have radioactive material, those are yellow. And then we also have an operable unit for groundwater, which is the whole site. OU one and OU two are in remedial design stage, and the groundwater operable unit is in the remedial investigation stage. Go ahead to the next slide. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on history here. Many of you know the site has been in Bridgeton for a very long time, and we are working quickly now to try to implement some cleanups here. So, quick focus on kind of how we are trying to keep everyone informed of where we're at. We have a scheduled dashboard that you can link, you can get to from the EPA Site Profile page, and it'll show you kind of where, within the remedial design, we're at. We are getting close to the end of the process. We are currently having the PRPs for the site do something called pre-excavation confirmation sampling, and the purpose of this is to do all the final sampling and data collection we need to know where the radioactive material that's going to be excavated as part of the remedy for the site, so that we can expedite when we get to the cleanup process. And yes, the kind of slide we're on now kind of shows where we're at in that pre-excavation sampling plan work. We're about 31% done. We started earlier in August. Drilling work started last week. I was at the site pretty much all day today, watching the drilling work happening. We anticipate this work being done by around Thanksgiving time, but it does depend on the results that we get for these borings that were, that were planned to be collected. If we do see higher concentrations, in some places, there may have to be step-out borings. That could extend the timeframe for this, but not by a significant amount of time, just beyond possibly November. But the plan is for this work to be completed by November. The only other step we have in design is for the PRPs to give us a 100% design report. They owe us that report in October, and we'll be reviewing that, and of course, we'll put any comments EPA has out on our website, once we complete our review, so everyone can see what we think of the PRP's design. But all that is putting us on a track to complete the design process by basically summer of next year. And that is the track that we are on. After that is done, we need to get a signed agreement with the responsible parties for them to actually conduct the remedial action, but the estimated schedule we have for that puts the actual excavation beginning towards the end of 2027. So we're going to keep updating kind of where we're at with that goal in mind, getting to the beginning of the cleanup in 2027. So with that, you can kind of scroll to the last, and this is just a slide that will get you to the various information resources we have, documents, progress, where we're collecting samples, what the results are, and obviously, you can contact Jessica Evans if you have any specific questions, and she will relay those to me and others at EPA as needed. That's really all I had, unless there are any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions? I do have one. Okay, so the samplings, the 495, are those new holes being drilled, or are they existing ones that you're going back into?
They are about 20% existing and 80% new. And the new is because we're putting the samples kind of right outside where the planned excavations are, to confirm that they're clean beyond that. So if we do get results that show that there is radioactive material that needs to be sent away from Bridgeton, then those excavations will be expanded, and that will all kind of get funneled into that final design that we get in the middle of 2026.
Okay. Counselmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor, and you may have mentioned this, and I just missed it. Do you have any public meetings scheduled for the remainder of the year or for the, through this year? And if so, could you make sure that we know about them? I don't know if you have them regularly or when needed, or?
We will for sure have a public meeting when the design is complete, that's a requirement of CIRCLA, but Jess is working pretty regularly to try to schedule meetings with the Technical Community Advisory Group, that is led by Dawn Chapman and Karen Nickel. But we will definitely make sure you all have info in advance of any meetings that we are planning to have. We don't have any scheduled, I think, currently.
Thank you.
Any further questions from Counsel? For Counsel and the public, Jessica Evans is on-site here every Wednesday, unless she has a previous engagement that she has to take care of, but normally from 8:30 to 3:30 or 4 o'clock, something like that. So please, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to Jessica. She's a great resource on what's going on at the landfill. Thank you, Mr. Mayer. Nice seeing you again. Thank you, Jessica. Next item on the agenda is consideration of resolutions. First is Resolution 25-03. I'm going to recognize Council Chair Gretchen Luke.
Mayor, I make a motion for first reading of Resolution, sorry, for reading of Resolution R. 25-3.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther for reading of Resolution R. 25-03 and the amendment. Yeah, okay. Go to the motion at the bottom.
Okay. I move to approve the unit prices up to a total cost of $10,500, as provided by Adonis E. Recycling dated June 19th, 2025, that have been incorporated into the grant contract with St. Louis County for the E. Recycling and Shredding Event on Saturday, October 25th, 2025.
Motion is made for the recommendation of the total cost of $10,500 by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther. Any discussion? I see none. Whoops. Councilmember Norris?
Yes, sir. Is this available only to Bridgeton residents, or is it to everyone in St. Louis County?
Mr. Gunn?
This will be for all residents in St. Louis County.
Do they need to show an ID or anything?
Yes, we'll do the same thing we did two years ago. We'll have people there checking IDs and clipboards as far as what ZIP code they're in.
Okay, is there a limit on how many?
Two large items, and a large item are those big TVs.
Okay. So you can bring six small TVs?
We're going to clarify that in the next banner article that comes out.
Okay, all right, just kidding. Thank you.
Councilmember Luther?
Oh, I, following up on Joni, that, Councilmember Norris, so thank you for those specifics, and also to let you know, so that, I think the more we can publicize this, the better, especially with the specifics. But this was very popular when we did it two years ago, three years ago? Anyway, so I'm glad to see it's back, because it was very popular, and I think a busy day for everybody, so thank you.
And that's the whole reason we're coming back, to get a motion for approval, because we'll be over the $10,000 amount. St. Louis County gave us some extra money, which pushed me over the threshold, so we're back to having to approve the unit prices, much like the concrete bid that we do.
Right, thank you.
I see no further lights. All in favor of this motion, of this amendment to include the cost? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. It passes. Next item on the agenda, we're going to recess for some public hearings. The first one, I'm going to call Mr. Bookout up to the podium, our city administrator, regarding the annual tax rate. Mr. Bookout?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Notice of this hearing was advertised in the August 29th, 2025, St. Louis County. The notice was posted at City Hall, the Recreation Center, and the Bridgeton Trails Library for Public View on August 21st, 2025. For the year 2025, the tax rate ceilings are based on the assessed valuation of real property in the city as of July 1st, 2025, as provided- as provided by the Collector of Revenue for St. Louis County. This levy is subject to change pending action by the Board of Equalization and/or the tax rate certification by the state. The proposed tax rate ceiling is twelve point six cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value for residential property and point, or seventeen point eight cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value for commercial property. The city of Bridgeton has not in past years, by city council choice, levied a tax on personal property and agricultural property. The city has also traditionally chosen to roll back the residential property tax rate to sixteen cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. As the current rate ceiling is below sixteen cents, there would be no voluntary reduction for twenty-twenty-five. The assessed valuation of residential and commercial property for the previous year, twenty-twenty-four, was five hundred and twenty-one million, five hundred and twenty-one point eight million dollars. The assessed value for twenty-twenty-five is six hundred and thirty-seven point one million, which is up twenty-two point one million from twenty-twenty-four. These assessed valuation figures sent to Bridgeton from St. Louis County July first, twenty-twenty-five constitute the basis for this assumptions and resulting hearing declarations. Revisions to St. Louis County's figures are revisited and will be adjusted if necessary. As a result, the city is, can expect to receive approximately one million thirty thousand fifty-six dollars from real property taxes, assuming a one-hundred percent collection rate for use by the city in twenty-twenty-five. This is up forty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars from the budgeted revenue for this year. The formula used by the Collector's Office is designed to ensure that there is no major windfall or shortfall to this revenue source as a result of the changes in the valuation of the property classes. The property tax revenues at the suggested rates will still constitute approximately five percent of the city's estimated general fund revenues for the year. Currently, the CPI as certified by the Missouri Department of Revenue is two point nine percent for the current year, which is down from three point four percent in twenty-twenty-four. I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Bookout? I see none.
All righty.
I think you're off the hook. First consideration of bill number sixty-five-ten covers the proposed tax levies later in the agenda. Thank you. Next public hearing on the agenda is number twenty-five, PZ twelve, Mr. Graytons. Mr. Graytons, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address to the court reporter.
Zach Graytons, Planning and Zoning Officer with the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, one-two-three-five-five Natural Bridge Road, Bridgeton, Missouri, six-three-zero-four-four.
Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. Before I go through some of my, go through my slides, I'm going to read the list of the city's exhibits for this amended special use permit application. They include a copy of the report to the mayor and city council members from the Planning Commission dated August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, a copy of the staff report to the Planning Commission dated August seventh, two thousand twenty-five, a copy of the Planning Commission minutes from the August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting, and a copy of the site plan for this application, and by reference, ordinance number seventy dash twenty-five, the zoning ordinance with amendments through January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Would you like those entered into the record?
Uh, please.
Please enter the exhibits into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got some slides that include some maps and an overview of what was included in the, in the material distributed prior to the meeting. This request, application twenty-five dash PZ dash twelve, this is a request to amend special use permit that was approved by ordinance twenty-four dash zero-one. The request is to expand the previously approved Clean Earth landfill located at one-three-eight-one-zero and one-three-eight-one-two Missouri Bottom Road, expanding it to the parcels addressed as one-three-seven-two-eight, one-three-seven-three-eight, and one-three-seven-four-eight Missouri Bottom Road, and one-four-one-seven-five Ferguson Lane. It is approximately eighty acres of land. It's in the M-one Manufacturing District Limited. This went to the Planning Commission at their August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting. In a public hearing was held, the Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions by a vote of seven to five. The parcels, I've got two maps here. The parcels shown with the yellow boundaries, but that dashed line, the dashed line shows the outline, the boundary of the proposed Clean Earth landfill operations. The site is currently used for agricultural purposes. The portion of the one-four-one-seven-five Ferguson Lane property to the north, that's in the Missouri River, the Missouri River floodway. It's surrounded by a mix of various land uses, including agricultural to the east and to the south. And the existing Clean Earth landfill located just to the west. And beyond that, to the west is some industrial land, trailer storage, warehousing. And to the south, there is the Love's Travel Stop at the interchange of three-seventy and Missouri Bottom Road. Access to this site is currently provided from Ferguson Lane, what used to be Ferguson Lane, which is now a private access drive off of Missouri Bottom Road. As I mentioned, the property is zone M-one Manufacturing District Limited. It is surrounded by mostly M-one zoning, thus to the east and to the west. To the south is M-three-R Planned Manufacturing District. There's some R-one there also where there's a, it's still zone R-one immediately to the south. As was stated in the applicant's request, the, the, it is to, there was, there's an existing Clean Earth landfill that was approved by council in January of last year. It was approved for thirty acres. They're proposing to expand it eighty acres to the east. This property was recently rezoned from R-one residential to M-one manufacturing. The comprehensive plan shows this area on the future land use map as, future uses as industrial slash utility. The applicant did state in their application material that their eventual goal is for industrial development in this area. They've stated that's the purpose of their Clean Earth landfill project. Regarding traffic and parking, there would be no change to traffic generation or parking demand with this proposal. There's currently trucks in and out, bringing fill, and then some employees that are there day-to-day grading and monitoring the material brought in. This is on St. Louis County right-of-way, and there was a condition recommended that I'll get to later that addresses that. Regarding neighborhood character, the surrounding property is a mix of agricultural, industrial, and commercial land uses. I did also want to point out in the material, there was after the, after the Planning Commission minutes in your packet, there was an email that was submitted by a, an adjacent property owner that was submitted to the Planning Commission as well. That's in the, in the back of the material. I've got a summary here in these two slides. This is a summary of the recommended conditions from staff if this special use permit is to be approved. And these conditions were also recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. This is a summary of them. I'll run through that real, real quick. The special use permit for Clean Earth landfill is for Clean Earth landfill and accessory uses. Any future expansion would require an amendment to the special use permit. A floodplain development permit shall be required. Annual site disturbance permit renewal is required. Documentation of MSD, Missouri Department of Natural Resources, Missouri Bottom Levy District, and any other applicable agencies shall be submitted to Public Works staff. Any future buildings or structures will require a building permit. Prior to any grading or filling in grading area five, and I have this on the slide, this was in the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. Prior to any grading or filling in grading area five, grading areas one through three shall be completed. Grading and filling shall occur in the phases shown on the plan. Each phase shall be completed prior to starting the next phase. And there was a item in there listed too. That includes all drainage swales as well. All fill activities shall occur in accordance with chapter five hundred and fifty of the Bridgeton Municipal Code. And the last recommended condition, documentation of approval from the St. Louis County Department of Transportation and Public Works shall be submitted to the Bridgeton Public Works Department. This, I've got a couple pictures, but this site is so large, of course, it's kind of hard to capture. In the, this is the current site. It's, as stated, it's used for agricultural purposes. There's a wooded area to the, to the left. It's hard to tell, but in the back, in the back, you can sort of see the existing fill site, the thirty-acre fill site that was approved in January of twenty-twenty-four. And this is a copy of the site plan that shows the grading areas, and that can help reference some of those phases that was referenced in the, in the report. That concludes my slides. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions from counsel? Mr. Graytons? Counsel member Norris?
More of a comment, Mr. Grayton. This request seems to have upset some people, but it sounds like actually this is a more control for the city. Is that correct?
Well, the...
With all the, all the steps you have to do before, for the future of anything to happen.
Through the special use permit, we are able to require those, those conditions. So it is more controlled than a permitted use would be, of course.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to recognize the city attorney, Mr. Lennon-Brooker.
Thanks, Mr. Graytons. The conditions that you've outlined, those will apply to the existing thirty acres and the added eighty, is that correct?
That was the intent, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And that was part of why there was a reference to, and maybe I should have explained that. Grading areas one through three were a part of the original special use permit that was approved. There was a grading area four, but that was for a small drainage swale. That was why that was referenced. But yes, it would apply to the original site as well.
And these are conditions that add some?
Correct.
Yeah.
There are some additional conditions, thank you. The, the original, and part of that was because of the, the size of the expansion compared to the original thirty acres. The original special use permit included these five. These additional were mainly due to the size and, and just to try to address those concerns, especially with additional phases. Thank you, Mr. Lennon-Brooker.
Counsel, any further questions of Mr. Graytons? I see none. Thank you. Is the applicant in the audience and would like to come forward? I need to swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address to the reporter.
My name is Steve Quigley. I'm a Clayton Engineering, two-two-six-eight Welsh Industrial Court, Maryland Heights, six-three-one-four-six. Good evening, Mayor, counsel. I am here to fill you in a little bit about this fill expansion. It is just an expansion of an existing clean fill operation that's currently going on. This is an engineered fill operation where the fill is being monitored by a Solos engineer. And we will have a place for, or a report for proper placement and compaction of that fill once they're complete. The hours for this operation is generally seven AM to four PM, Monday through Friday. The streets out here, mainly Missouri Bottom Road, is being swept numerous times during the day. And this is the same contractor doing this work as did the site work at the Davidson Buildings. So I think you can see how that turned out. I think so far, they've done a nice job of, of keeping the area clean, keeping the sides of the existing fill areas vegetated so that it looks nice in appearance from the roadways. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions of the applicant? Counsel member Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so I understand this is phased. So what is the timeframe for the, all of these phases to be completed?
Well, it kind of depends on the available material in the area. We're thinking it's probably three, four years.
And at the end of four years, what is your, if you can share that, what is your plan, overall plan or goal for this property?
As Mr. Grayton said, the ultimate goal for this property is industrial development. So the first part of that is to raise it out of the floodplain.
Okay.
We think we're a little bit better suited in this location in that we will have direct access to the Missouri River for our drainage. So we won't impose that nor impact that within the levy area. And we also have a significantly raised access point being right across from the Love's entrance.
Okay, so about a four-year window. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of the applicant? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody in the audience like to come forward and speak in favor of this application? I see none. Would anybody in the audience like to come forward and, and speak in opposition of this application? I see none. Public hearing application twenty-five PZ dash twelve is now closed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for application twenty-five dash PZ dash thirteen. Again, Mr. Graytons? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address to the recorder.
Zach Graytons, Planning and Zoning Officer with the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, one-two-three-five-five Natural Bridge Road, Bridgeton, Missouri, six-three-zero-four-four.
Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. Before I go into my slides, I will read the city's list of exhibits for this special use permit application. They include a copy of the report to the mayor and city council from the Planning Commission dated August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, a copy of the staff report to the Planning Commission dated August sixth, two thousand twenty-five, a copy of the Planning Commission minutes from the, their August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting, a copy of the site plan submitted for this request, and by reference, ordinance number seventy dash twenty-five, the zoning ordinance with amendments through January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Would you like the exhibits entered into the record?
Yes.
Okay. Recorder, please enter the exhibits into the record. Proceed.
Thank you. Application twenty-five dash PZ dash thirteen, this is a request for a special use permit to allow outdoor seating associated with a restaurant or tavern located at one-two-three-three-four Natural Bridge Road in the B-two Community Business District. This went to the Planning Commission at their August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting. The Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions by a vote of twelve to zero. I will have a few comments on the conditions as well later in my, my slides. The, the location, the applicant is, is for the tavern, it's, it's noon somewhere, which is located at one-two-three-three-four Natural Bridge Road, highlighted in red. It's in a multi-tenant commercial building located on the south side of Natural Bridge. There's a mix of restaurant, retail, and service types of commercial uses in this shopping center. It is surrounded by a mix of land uses, including institutional to the north with City Hall and a church and the post office, as well as some additional retail and service uses to the north and east and to the west. And then to the south is a warehouse. The property, as stated, is zone B-two Community Business District. It's surrounded by B-two to the north, east, and west. And the warehouse to the south is in the M-three-D Planned Manufacturing District. The... Stated the location, this is a restaurant slash tavern. It's been at this location since early two thousand. The current owner, I believe, has been there for the last few years. No, the current owner nor any previous owner had ever pursued a special use permit for outdoor seating at this location. This is the first one at this location in this multi-tenant building. There was a reference to the comprehensive plan in the report. It states to encourage commercial infill. The future land use map shows this area as commercial. Regarding impact on traffic and parking, there would be no change to traffic generation... Uh, regarding impact on traffic and parking, um, there would be no change to traffic generation uh, with the proposal for outdoor seating, and the parking currently exceeds the requirements in the zoning ordinance. The neighborhood is surrounded by a mix of commercial land uses, including retail, restaurant, service, and office, uh, uses. I did want to point out there was, there were some comments from the police department included in the report. Uh, uh, police department's concerned, uh, mainly regarding hours and the fence, the proposed fencing for the outdoor seating area, and I'll mention that, uh, in the next slide. So the, the, the recommended conditions from staff, I did want to mention, and I've got them on the next couple of slides here. The first two were modified by the planning commission at their August eleventh meeting. So, for example, uh, the recommended condition number one, uh, staff's recommendation was to limit the hours from eleven AM to dusk, and that was, um, based on the, also on the comments from the police department. Uh, planning commission modified those, voted to modify that condition to eleven AM to eleven PM. Uh, condition number two, this one addressed, uh, a few different items. It addressed that, a requirement that the permit perimeter of the seating area must be enclosed with a fence, wrought iron style constructed with aluminum steel or similar material with a minimum height of four feet. And that if a gate was required, it was staff's recommendation that it should be for emergency exit only and equipped with an alarm. This was, uh, based on feedback from the police department. The planning commission at the August eleventh meeting modified this condition, uh, and it was changed to remove the requirement for an alarm, but instead the gate shall be equipped with a latch, and that was to prohibit any, uh, entrance from outside of the gated area, the fenced area. Uh, the remaining recommended conditions were not modified by the, by the planning commission. That includes a maximum of three tables and four chairs per table. Uh, must remain in the fenced area, may be left during non-business hours. The outdoor seating shall be for patrons only, seated in chairs at tables and not for congregating. The, uh, recommended condition number five, if this is to be approved, uh, clear pedestrian access shall be provided at all times with a minimum of five feet of width. The operator shall use signage to inform patrons when and where outdoor seating is permitted. Sidewalks shall be kept free from trash and litter at all times. And it shall be the responsibility of the applicant to get any necessary approvals to their liquor license for, if this is to be approved. And I do have, um, some of the slides, well, some pictures and then some of this, um, information submitted by the applicant. This is, uh, the location we're talking about, one-two-three-three-four Natural Bridge Road. This is the, the red line shows generally the, the area they're proposing for outdoor seating. I did want to go back a little bit just because this question came up at the planning commission meeting. On the right-hand side of that picture, that's the main entrance to the establishment, and right in the middle, that's an additional, uh, a door that would be providing access to the fenced area. The, again, this shows the, the applicant's proposed area. This was, um, provided by the applicant showing the fenced area and then the, the distances, there's five feet, four inches, uh, of space in the walkway. And this is the style of fence that the applicant is proposing. That concludes my slides, are there any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Wessie?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, quick question, the, uh, photo you did, you showed us of the fence, is that the fence that is right down the plaza in front of, um, um, Lehman's Landing?
Correct, the app-
Okay.
I don't know what happened there. The applicant provided that. I'm gonna back up a little bit.
It's okay, I, I remember what it looked like, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that the photo that was provided is a business that is inside of the same structure that is just a, what, thirty-second walk away?
Yeah, the applicant provided that to show the example of, of the type of fence that they would, uh, install if this is approved. And so as part of that condition, that would be a requirement.
Cool, thank you. Oh, and, uh, sorry, just one other thing, um, the Lehman's Landing one right there, I'm not seeing a gate on that particular fence, so...
I think on the back, on the upper right-hand portion, there's an opening.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Satil is next.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, obviously this, it's a nice looking fence, but it's not four feet tall, so it also has to be that with, you know, to make them all four feet, I don't know if it needs to or if they're trying to match this height of this one.
This, uh, the recommendation for this one is four feet in height. It wasn't necessarily based on matching Lehman's Landing.
Can you go back to the picture that shows the outline, uh, the outline of the pavement from the front?
This one?
Yes, this one here, yes.
Okay.
I like that the walkway is out there, maybe not covered, but you can walk around and it doesn't slam you into a post down at the end. They left an area open, some of these that come to us, they don't leave an area where the, you know, pedestrians can actually walk around the post without stepping out in traffic, uh, car, you know, traffic, so I like that they left an area open right there or that didn't try to go all the way to the other door. Thank you.
Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more of a comment, so I know these were entered in the record and you made reference to concerns that were expressed by our chief of police, and I thought it would be worth noting what those are, which is that we continue to oppose any expansion of outdoor seating for the businesses in this shopping plaza due to ongoing issues with congregation and loitering in the parking lot. The sidewalk and surrounding area outside these establishments are not adequate to support such use and have consistently resulted in patrons loitering and consuming alcohol on both the sidewalk and in the parking lot, which I think is an impact on the general welfare of that area.
Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor, I just had the exact same comment that Councilmember Luther just shared. Um, an accurate representation of the actual police comments. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions from counsel of Mr. Greitens? I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
The applicant, Mr. Fondre Loving, would you like to come forward? Okay. Do you agree to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name and your address to the recorder.
I am Olivia Shelltrak, Olivia, O-L-I-V-I-A, Shelltrak is S-H-E-L-L-T-R-A-K. Address is one-two-four-seven-five Parkwood Lane, Blackjack, Missouri, six-three-zero-three-three. Thank you guys for just taking the time to hear us out. Um, really basically, kind of just what I told the zoning when we came up, is that really all we are asking for is the same sitting situation outside as our friends and neighbors at Lehman's. Um, we are a non-smoking bar, we are a sports bar and grill, we have food, we, most of half of our stuff is food. We have really good food, um, but we, people smoke outside. So when you see congregating outside of our bar, it's usually people just outside smoking. But we just would like a place where people can come and eat and sit and enjoy each other's company. Um, currently, we are only open from four until close, um, except for Sundays currently. We are hoping to expand that, but in order to expand that and to draw more business to us and the area, is to offer some other alternative seating besides inside the bar. Um, to address some of the concerns from, that were stated to the chief, from the chief of police, is, uh, we have been in here for six years. Um, honestly, we had chairs, tables and chairs outside for the last five. Um, it wasn't until more recently when we were told to remove them, and we did. Um, but prior to that, we didn't, we don't have, our customers are not hanging out in the parking lot drinking. Um, they don't hang out outside drinking. When we had tables, yeah, we had people that sit outside and eat and have a couple of drinks. But again, all we're asking for is a similar situation to our neighbors, to be able to offer people to be able to sit outside. Um, we haven't had any issues at all with anybody, with the police, anybody out with our, with our place in, in the last six years, since we've been there, so. I'm open to any questions, any.
Counsel, any questions or comments of Ms. Shelltrak? I'm gonna start with Councilmember Wessie.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, thank you very much for coming in to talk about this today. Um, to try and, uh, I guess alleviate some of the concerns that some of the council members might have, would you be willing to put up a sign or something reminding patrons that they have to stay inside of the gated area? And also make it to be almost zero tolerance to where if you had a patron that was leaving the gated area, um, they would have to, they would be expected to leave the bar, um, or something among that, that type of a setup? Because I, while I do understand where the chief of police is coming from and not wanting to have people that might be drinking, hanging out in the parking lot, which would be a public safety hazard and also, um, a image hazard, like I say you could almost call it, uh, which I'm sure you also would be concerned with because you don't want to have, uh, the risk of somebody that you served getting hit by a car and then having lost stuff that could go on. Um, I know one of the number one things that I hear from, uh, my constituent, my, can't talk, excuse me, um, whenever I'm going around getting signatures, is they want more places to be able to eat in Bridgeton Outdoors. And while I'll be the first to say that unfortunately, the, uh, building is not the best setup for an outdoor patio, um, if you can make four seats, or four tables out there available, uh, especially since we allow, um, another business in that particular building just thirty seconds away from you to do it, um, I don't personally see an issue with it, so would that be something you'd be okay with?
Absolutely, and like I said, I mean, we did have tables and chairs out there just for people to sit, and really it was, like I said, you know, just to smoke and have a drink and hang out and chit-chat and conversate, you know? I love a good happy hour, I like to, I would love to have the great outdoor seating, but yes, I, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Patil.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just reiterate, um, how many tables, three tables or four? And also what are your hours of operation again, if you could just tell me that?
Um, I believe the, whatever we could fit, and I believe what they said, you know, we probably can only fit about three tables out there. Yeah, if we have the seating out there. Um, so we were, we were thinking like three tables with four chairs at least each. Um, currently, right now, our hours are from four PM until one-thirty. Um, of course, we stopped serving liquor at one, but, um, and then, oh, right now, Sunday, Sunday, fun day, it is football season. We are open from eleven AM until close. Um, we want to expand, when we first opened, we were open earlier, but just when COVID hit, we opened right before COVID. Um, so we just haven't expanded those hours back, we're just now, right now, currently, from four until close.
Close is what time?
One-thirty.
Thank you.
Councilmember Luther.
Already asked and answered, thank you.
Oh, okay, any further questions of Ms. Shelltrak? Comments? Oh, Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor, just for clarification on condition number one, Mr. Greitens, the, uh, in our packet, it says eleven AM till dusk, is, what did the, yeah, the, so, okay, so on page four of five in our packet, says number one, eleven AM till dusk, but the planning commission did change that to eleven AM to eleven PM.
Correct, the original condition, recommended condition was eleven AM to dusk. Planning commission voted to modify that at their meeting. That's why it was presented as eleven AM to eleven PM, which is what planning commission approved, and that is what the draft ordinance reflects also. But of course, um, all conditions are at the discretion of the council to modify or remove or add.
Thank you, and if I could just add, I mean, we were just kind of aligning with what Lehman's does currently as well. Um, since we don't open until four, if we're only allowed to dusk, that doesn't give us very much time and doesn't really, you know, help with us trying to attract more people to our place of business.
Councilmember Wessie.
Hello, Gun, sorry, uh, sorry to, uh, ask another question, but what you just said made me think of something. Um, would you be wanting to put any, uh, heaters or stuff like that out there during the, uh, winter months? Because, I'm just wondering if there could be any fire issues with that, or would, okay, perfect. For the record, she shook her head no.
In the winter, they can be cold.
Yep.
Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if we could, um, swear in the chief and just get clarification on, in the letter where it says that if there were a gate, um, it says any emergency exit must be secured with a gate and equipped with an alarm. And then the planning commission modified that to say the gate would be equipped with a latch. I was wondering if we could hear from the chief of, what he's thinking related to an alarm.
We'll, we'll get to the chief after we're finished with, uh, Ms. Shelltrak.
Thank you.
Councilmember Iowano.
Yes, I just, I'm confused, I need some clarification. So you're stating your hours are from four PM to eleven, or, I'm sorry, one-thirty AM, I'm sorry. But I'm looking at the paper before me and the hours are permitted from eleven AM to eleven PM.
Correct, well, Sundays, we are open at eleven, and we do plan and want to expand our hours. But like I said, um, after, we were open, our original hours when we first opened was eleven until close. Um, but after COVID, we just didn't have the crowd, and, um, right now, so that is something we want to work towards. And having the outdoor seating is something that would attract more people, so that maybe we can get, generate more business and be able to extend our hours, because again, we have great food, people come over there for the food and just the wings. So, uh, you know, that's just one of the things of why we're asking for this as well.
Thank you.
Any further questions from counsel? I see none, thank you, Olivia.
Thank you.
Okay. And, um, chief, um, I'll need to swear you in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name and address to the recorder.
Chief Mark Masati, City of Bridgeton, twelve-three-fifty-five Natural Bridge, Bridgeton, Missouri, six-three-zero-four-four.
Okay, I'm gonna recognize Councilmember Luke again to ask her question.
Thank you, Mayor, so chief, I was just looking for, um, some background behind your letter where you said that the gate would be equipped with an alarm, to compare that to the planning commission's change to make it be, um, the gate just have a latch.
So our thought process with the alarm was when, you know, there's, a lot of times in the evenings, the plaza will get busy and there's a lot of people in and out, and we did, we felt like an alarm would prevent people from coming in and out of that gate, because the gate should be for exit, emergency exit only, that's the way we were looking at it.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, councilmember Satil.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Wouldn't a latch, such as like a pool latch, you know, where it has a, where you can only open from the, like, one side, uh, wouldn't that be sufficient, or you want the alarm so it goes off to the police, or the alarm just to go back inside to the owners?
Our recommendation was to have an alarm on it to keep people from coming in and out of there, that was our recommendation.
Are those, uh, readily available, or, I haven't seen them on anything in Bridgeton, so I'm just kind of wondering.
But I don't understand what I'm being asked.
Any other gates with alarms like this, are there any others in Bridgeton currently? I haven't seen any anywhere.
I have, I have no idea.
Okay. So this is something new where we're considering possibly, or alarms on gates, or? I like the idea of a lock on it, you know, or a patent, you know, like, like a pool lock, because I've seen those where you can only reach them up and have a four-foot fence, it's nice if it's only open from the inside. And that way they can still use it as an emergency exit, okay, so I'm just kind of curious about the alarm kind of system, and what kind of cost factor that might be if it's readily, sometimes they put them on a pool, alarms on a pool, okay? So I'm just kind of curious if we, if we've got any, currently, any, at any gates or doors like that, that's all.
I have no idea of any, Mr. Gunn or Mr. Greitens, are you aware of any?
I'm not.
Okay. Um, chief, just off the top of your head, um, calls for service, uh, have there been numerous or few, or do you know?
I don't have any of those numbers with me, Mayor, I mean, you know, we had the- I mean, you know, we had the issue before with the liquor license that we know about, so I, I have no idea what the numbers are off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of the chief? Just a, just a minute, just a minute. Okay. We can't have any more testimony, okay. Any further questions of the chief? I see none. Anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this application? I see none. Anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak in opposition of this application? I see none. Public hearing for application 25-PZ-13 is closed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for application 25-PZ-14. Again, Mr. Graytons. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address to the recorder.
Zach Graytons, Planning and Zoning Officer, City of Bridgeton, Missouri, 12355 Natural Bridge Road, Bridgeton, Missouri, 63044.
Proceed.
Thank you. Before I go into the slides, I will read the list of the city's exhibits for this special use permit application. It includes a copy of the report to the mayor and city council from the planning commission dated August 27, 2025, a copy of the staff report to the planning commission dated August 6, 2025, a copy of the planning commission minutes from the August 11, 2025 meeting, a copy of the site plan submitted by the applicant for this application, by reference ordinance number 70-25, the zoning ordinance with amendments through January 17, 2024.
Would you like the exhibits entered into the record?
Yes.
Please enter the exhibits into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Application 25-PZ-14, this is a special use permit request to allow, there are two requests with this. One, to allow the sale of liquor associated with a restaurant. And then the second being to allow a reception hall or similar event space at the, the address of 11977, Unit 115, St. Charles Rock Road. The property is in the B2 Community Business District. The planning commission recommended approval at their August 11, 2025 meeting with conditions by a vote of 12 to 0. I do want to mention also, and this was included in the material, the applicant had pre, originally applied for outdoor seating, but then withdrew that portion of the application. So the, what was presented to the planning commission and before you is the two items. Sale of liquor associated with a restaurant and a reception hall or similar event space at this location. This is located in the multi-tenant shopping center, Orchard Bend Shopping Center, on St. Charles Rock, at the corner of St. Charles Rock Road and Harmony Lane. This shopping center includes a mix of retail, restaurant and service types of commercial uses. It is surrounded by a mix of other commercial uses to the west, south and southeast. It's, there is single-family dwellings, subdivisions located to the north and to the east. As stated, the property is Zone B2, Community Business District, surrounded by B2 to the south and west, and R3 to the north and east. As the applicant had stated in their material, so this is a vacant tenant space, approximately 2,800 square feet. An item I also wanted to point out, the restaurant portion that they're proposing. So the applicant is proposing a restaurant that'd be open for breakfast, brunch, lunch hours, 7:30 AM to 3:30 PM. They had stated their proposed hours of operation. The restaurant portion is permitted by right. The sale of liquor is what requires the special use permit and to operate an event space. That's the reason for the special use permit. Regarding the comprehensive plan, it, there is a reference to encouraging commercial infill. The future land use map shows this area as commercial. Existing circulation and parking is sufficient to accommodate the parking demand and the parking exceeds the zoning requirements. The neighborhood character of this area includes a mix of commercial land uses to the south and west. That's a mix of retail, restaurant, service uses and residential neighborhood to the north. I've got, there were three recommended conditions if this special use permit is to be approved, and these were also approved by the planning commission, recommended for approval by the planning commission. The special use permit for Unit Number 115 shall permit a reception hall and event space and the sale of liquor in conjunction with a restaurant and shall occur within an enclosed building only. It shall be the responsibility of the applicant to obtain liquor license and conform to all requirements of that liquor license. The hours for the reception hall are not to overlap with the restaurant. Events shall not occur after 10 o'clock PM. Sale and consumption of liquor for the event space shall be subject to any liquor license requirements. And I've got picture of the space. It's the one just to the left-hand side of this picture of the, the tax office there with the blue sign. It's that vacant space adjacent to the Hobby Lobby location. So it's the one shown as number 12 in red on this plan that was from the property owner. That concludes my slides. Are there any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Graytons? I see Councilmember Norris has a light on.
Mr. Grayton, the breakfast brunch is going to be the hours 7:30 to 3:30. The event center, is that in the same location, only it will be conducted after hours? Or is there another room in that facility?
The applicant has proposed that it would all be in the same location. There's not a separate room. They would use the restaurant space for the reception hall or event space as well.
Are they closed on Mondays and Tuesdays?
In, in the applicant's information, yes, they are proposing to be closed on Monday and Tuesday. And the, since the condition was that the hours of the reception hall shall not overlap with the restaurant, that would allow for using the space as a, for events or receptions on Mondays and Tuesdays as an option as well.
All right. Thank you.
Any further questions of Mr. Graytons from council? I see none. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward? Okay. Raise your right hand, let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address to the recorder.
My name's Lynette Agnew and my address is 11977 St. Charles Rock Road, Bridgeton, Missouri.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions of the applicant? Councilmember Norris.
Thank you. Welcome to Bridgeton. Will you, is, will you manage the store yourself?
I will.
All right. Is this your only store?
It is.
Okay. Are you compared to any other facility, like, you know, I'm?
I would say we are comparable to, if you've heard of Pink Willow or Half and Half in Clayton. Also, there is.
Would be anything like First Watch?
A little different, more upscale than First Watch. First Watch is probably a little more casual, but the menu items would be very comparable.
Okay. All righty. It looks like a very nice, if I saw, or, this isn't a chain, is it? Do you, anything, this is a?
No, I ran a restaurant before, but different, not this particular restaurant.
Okay. Because there was something I pulled up and it, I came out of Michigan with the same name and everything, but it was.
In Michigan?
Uh huh.
Okay. Well, we do have a website.
You know those, you know that Facebook and stuff like that can find all kinds of things, but, okay. It looks like a girly place?
Yeah, it is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mine's kind of an open question. I, my best hobby is, is eating and trying different foods. So can you explain what kind of food you're going to be serving?
So it would be a brunch, brunch and breakfast. We would have maybe avocado toast. There would be some eggs, waffles, sausage, shrimp and grits. There could be burgers and fries for the brunch hour, things like that.
Okay, great, thanks, welcome.
I like to eat as well, but he has a higher metabolism than I do. Councilmember Westy.
Just a quick comment. I don't care how girly it is, I'm part of the Bros Who Brunch Club, so I'm, I'm all for giving some of these benedicts a try.
Please come out and be it.
Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mondays and Tuesdays, you would close, but you would predominantly rent that space out for maybe like showers or something of that nature?
So bridal shower, engagement, party or something like that.
And the timeframe of that, where you would be allowed for patrons to come in and they would have to exit at what time? Like, what are the hours that you would do that?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
What are the hours that you would have that space on Mondays and Tuesdays for those type of events?
So it would be more so between 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM.
Okay, so not an all-day, it's just?
No.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any further questions of the applicant from council? I see none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this application? I see none. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak in opposition of this application? I see none. Application 25-PZ-14 hearing is now closed. One more hearing. Application 25-PZ-15, Mr. Graytons.
He's ready.
You swear to tell the whole, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
So hope we get, okay. State your name and address to the recorder.
Zach Graytons, Planning and Zoning Officer with the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, 12355 Natural Bridge Road, Bridgeton, Missouri, 63044.
Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. Before I go through the slides, I will read the list of the city's exhibits for this special use permit application. It includes a copy of the report to the mayor and city council members from the planning commission dated August 27, 2025, a copy of the staff report to the planning commission dated August 6, 2025, a copy of the planning commission minutes from their August 11, 2025 meeting, a copy of the site plan submitted for this application, and by reference ordinance number 70-25, the zoning ordinance with amendments through January 17, 2024.
Would you like the exhibits entered into the record?
Yes.
Please enter the exhibits into the record. Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. Application 25-PZ-15, this is a, a special use permit application and the request is to allow an adult daycare center at 10937 St. Charles Rock Road. The property is Zone B5W Planned Commercial District. This went to the planning commission at their August 11, 2025 meeting for a public hearing and the planning commission recommended approval with conditions by a vote of 12 to 0. This is located in the Cypress Village Shopping Center, St. Charles Rock Road, west of Cypress Road. The red line at the bottom, that's the boundary between Bridgeton and St. Anne. This shopping center, it, currently there are a number of vacancies, but there are some tenants. There's some retail, restaurant and service uses. The, at the bottom of this map, those two buildings are no longer there. That is the location of a Chick-fil-A restaurant, which I believe is getting ready to open in the coming months. Holman Middle School is located to the west of the shopping center and multifamily residential to the north. As mentioned, the property is Zone B5W Planned Commercial District. This zoning district is very similar to the B2 Community Business District. Many similar permitted uses with a few minor differences. This, this adult daycare requires a special use permit in this zoning district because it references the special use permits in the B2 district as well. The surrounding zoning, the Holman Middle School is unzoned. It's R5, Community Unit Plan to the north and St. Anne to the south. This is a vacant tenant space. It's approximately 5,200 square feet. The applicant currently adult, operates an adult daycare, an adult day center in the city of St. John, also on St. Charles Rock Road. Comprehensive plan refers to encouraging commercial infill in the city and the future land use map shows this area as commercial. Regarding traffic and parking, the existing circulation and parking is sufficient to accommodate parking demand and the parking exceeds the minimum required in the zoning. The neighborhood character includes a mix of commercial land uses, as well as some multifamily residential to the north, retail, restaurant and service within this location and across the street. There were two recommended conditions if this is to be approved and these were also recommended for approval by the planning commission. The parking lot shall be kept free from trash and litter, pavement well-maintained with proper markings and always maintain ADA compliant access to the building. I do have a picture of the specific location. It's that tenant, generally in the, right in the middle where the red, the sign with a little bit of red, and that, that's the door right in the center of that picture. That concludes my slides. Are there any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Graytons?
I have one question.
Councilmember Patel.
On some of our previous adult centers that we have, they also have vans to pick up. But will they be having vans to pick up and drop off? I mean, you didn't mention it, so I'm just curious.
The applicant did, it is in the applicant's material that was submitted that they do provide transportation and they may be able to elaborate on that if, if, when they come up.
That's all, thanks.
I don't see any further ones. Counsel, any further questions? I don't see any, thank you. Cut your breath. Is the applicant in the audience would like to come forward? Will both of you be speaking? I have to swear you in individually, just him, okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address to the recorder.
Hi, my name is Tony King. I'm the co-owner of a, got beloved adult daycare center.
And address?
An address, I'm sorry, of, of the current, is 8507 St. Charles Rock Road, St. John, Missouri. 8705 St. Charles Rock Road, St. John, Missouri.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Do you have anything to say before I recognize counsel for questions?
No, I'm just excited about being here and look forward to the opportunity to go forward.
Okay. Councilmember Westy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for looking at Bridgeton as a place to open your business. I did notice that you currently have an adult daycare operating. Are you going to keep that one operating and this is like an expansion? Or are you going to be moving that business?
No, we're gonna, it's going to be an expansion. We're gonna just migrate down to Bridgeton and duplicate what we're doing in St. John.
Awesome. Well, congrats on expanding your business. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Norris.
There was a question I wanted to ask. So you're going to operate the same operation here in Bridgeton as you do the St. John one?
Yes, ma'am.
The same with 20? And a question was brought up about the van. So you have pickup and delivery with the van?
Yes, we currently have three vans and we're looking to expand and buy a couple of more transits as well. Fifteen passenger vans as well.
I, I see you've had past, you know, experience. Do you keep medical staff on?
Well, yes, we do. We have a nurse that comes two times a week. And then we also have a, an home nurse that is coming on board with us as well, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. One is, so I understand you have the vans for pickup and drop off. So can people just bring people there or do you prefer to pick up and drop off? Is that, is that?
Well, if they have their own transportation and if they're already a client with the company, they can. But it's just not for anyone that can just come in. They have to be on the roster and so forth.
Okay, so the van is a convenience, but they can drop off as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, how many staff do you have?
We have currently now, we have four staff on the facility, a nurse and, what do you call it? Coordinator, activity coordinator, I'm sorry, I couldn't get that out.
That's right, that's right.
Activity coordinator, and then we have two drivers as well.
Okay.
With the nurse.
Okay. On, in this facility?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so as an adult? Okay. And then, so as an adult daycare center, who are you licensed? What licenses do you need to operate?
Well, we are licensed from the state of Missouri, and the participants need to have Medicaid to come to the center and what have you, and we're a state-funded program.
Okay, all right. And last one. Do you plan to have anything outside? Are you going to have chairs and tables or anything outside?
Well, no, we're not looking to be outside for the safety of our people and so on and so forth.
I expected that, but I just wanted to ask that. Thank you.
Yes. Okay.
Any further questions of the applicant from council? I see none. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this application? I see none. Anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak in opposition of this application? I see none there also. Application hearing 25-PZ-15 is now closed. Thank you. Recorder? All right. Next item on the agenda, under permits, waivers, and an appeal request. We have a sign variance. Councilmember Norris.
All right, Mayor, just one moment. I have to get back from all these special events things. Oh, my gosh. All righty, back to square one. It's been a long evening already, sir. All righty. Thank you for your patience. Motion to approve sign variance for application 25-291 for wall sign at Best Wash Laundromat at 3600 Lindbergh.
Second.
Motion's made for a sign variance approval for Best Wash Laundromat by Councilmember Norris, seconded by Councilmember Luke. Discussion.
Design and review gave a favorable approval with one condition, to clean up where the old sign location. A comment, the area of Lindbergh is a awkward corner, needs the advertisement, speed of the traffic. This is an owner-operated purchased building, and they have committed to the city of Bridgeton, so I do like that, that we have an owner in the city. So I hope we can approve this variance.
Councilmember Satell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I really like the looks of this sign, a lot better than just the temporary banner that's been up there for, I guess, this past year. I've been in there a couple of times, just because our washer and dryer conked out one time, and it's only like, you know, 500 feet from my house. But very nice, clean location there, all the machines are top-notch. They have multiple sizes in there. I know they were talking a little more about that, but the sign here, as long as it meets our requirements, this one stretches out pretty long, but their frontage is that much frontage, so I think it fits in really nice. I know they do have another location over there at Midland and Woodson Road. I think that might be also one of their franchise ones maybe, but I don't know if they own that building as well, but that's all. This one looks really nice. Thank you.
Councilmember Norris.
Just one more comment. This corporation that is going to be their headquarters, they operate 29 laundromats, so I think their facility, their income for the city, and their reputation, I think, would be a great asset to us.
Councilmember Westy.
Thank you, Mayor. I did just have one question. I guess I should say I really like how the sign looks, and I understand why they're trying to make it so large. They have a whole lot of frontage there. I did notice that it ended up passing by a vote of three to one. Do we know what the issue was with the one nay vote? Did they end up saying why they were voting nay?
Did not say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further questions or discussion? Councilmember Luther.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that this is considerably larger, that the sign proposed is considerably larger than the allowable amount, considerably, I think like 70% larger.
Any further discussion or comments, questions? I see none. All in favor of the sign variance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have one nay and six ayes, so it passes, the sign variance passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is for a consideration of new liquor license for El Mariachi Local Cantina. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make first consideration of new liquor license for El Mariachi Local Cantina Liquor by the Drink, Monday through Saturday, with Sunday sales by the drink.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther for first consideration of liquor license for El Mariachi Local Cantina. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Continue. Table.
That was it. Motion to table.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther to table the liquor license for El Mariachi Local Cantina. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Next item on the agenda is perfection of bills. First bill 6500 was tabled. Moving on to bill 6504 for second consideration. Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's already been read twice, right? It was read and tabled twice, so it's already been twice read, so we're ready just for a motion to move bill 6504 into ordinance form.
We need a motion to?
I know that. I was getting ready to?
Oh, I thought you were going to do the second reading. We've already had a second reading, is my point. The mayor said we're ready for a second reading. We don't need that.
Oh, okay. So the motion is to, is for bill number 6504 to become ordinance number?
25-27?
25-27.
Second.
Okay, motions made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. That bill number 6504 become ordinance 25-27. Discussion. Councilmember Luther.
Yes, I'd like to address Mr. Graytons and ask him what happens if we do not approve this bill.
Mr. Graytons.
Thank you. So this request for a text amendment, the reason it was proposed was to require a special use permit for a clean earth landfill in the M3R district, plant manufacturing district, which I had mentioned, I guess, two meetings ago. It's a 460-acre district. There is a 100-acre site that's already been used for clean earth fill, so the potential is that the remaining 360 acres could be used for clean earth landfill without any special use permit and without any oversight from the planning commission or city council. That's the potential.
Thank you.
I see no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Iwano?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Satell?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Thank you.
By a vote of seven to nothing, bill number 6504 becomes ordinance 25-27. Next item on the agenda, second consideration of bill number 6505. Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of bill 6505.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Iwano for second reading of bill number 6505. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Please continue.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and the interim city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with CBIZ for a staffing analysis and compensation plan substantially in the form attached here to. Move that bill 6505 become ordinance number 25-28.
Correct.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Satell. That bill number 6505 become ordinance 25-28. Discussion. Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to add the amended service agreement to bill 6505.
I'll second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Satell to add the service agreement to bill number 6505.
She's seconded both of those.
You want to?
She said, okay, I thought Satell did. Second was by Councilmember Iwano. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Two of them.
Of adding the service agreement to the bill? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Okay. Any further discussion? Councilmember Luther.
Yeah, this is a housekeeping question, really. So just the timing of this, it looks like the, so the, it looks like we would have a final draft of the agreement ready, possibly this month. When do we see this finishing, or what's the timetable for this, if I may ask?
We're probably on a schedule of, I think, if I recall correctly, it was three to four months out.
So September 17, three months after that, so we're looking at, okay, the end of the year?
Correct.
Okay, and that would be the finished analysis or whatever?
Correct. That would be their deliverables, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Norris.
Yeah, that was part answered, so we won't have this available for this year's budget. Correct?
That's accurate.
Thank you.
That was my question.
Any further questions, discussion? I see none. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Satell?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwano?
Aye.
Thank you.
By a vote of seven to nothing, bill number 6505 becomes ordinance 25-28. Next item on the agenda is consideration of new bills. First, bill number 6506, first consideration, Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for a second reading of, move for a first reading of bill number 6506. Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke for first consideration of bill number 6506. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, application 25-PZ-12 to amend special use permit ordinance 24-01 to allow a clean earth landfill located at 13728, 13738, and 13748, Missouri Bottom Road, and 14175 Ferguson Lane, expanding the clean earth landfill located at 13810 and 13812, Missouri Bottom Road. Move to table bill number 6506.
Second.
Motion is made to table bill number 6506 by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill number 6506 is tabled. Next item, bill number 6507, first consideration, Councilmember Luther again.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill number 6507. Second?
Motion's made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke for first consideration of bill number 6507. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number 25-PZ-13 for a special use permit to allow outdoor seating and/or dining area associated with a restaurant, tavern, or saloon located at 12334 Natural Bridge Road. Move to table bill number 6507.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke to table bill number 6508. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill number 6508 is tabled. 6507, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda, bill number 6508 for first consideration, Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill number 6508.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke for first reading of bill number 6508. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number 25-PZ-14 for a special use permit to allow sale of liquor associated with the restaurant, and to allow a reception hall or event space located at 11977 St. Charles Rock Road, Unit 115. Move to table bill number 6508.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke to table bill number 6508. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill number 6508 is tabled. Next item, bill number 6509 for first consideration, again, Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill number 6509.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke for first reading of bill number 6509. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Please continue.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number 25-PZ-15 for a special use permit to allow an adult daycare facility located at 10937 St. Charles Rock Road. Move to table bill number 6509.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke to table bill number 6509. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill number 6509 is tabled. Next item on the agenda, bill number 6510 for first consideration, we're going to change it up. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion for first reading of bill 6510.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther for first consideration of bill number 6510. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Please continue.
Thank you. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, establishing the annual rate of tax levy for the year 2025 on all real property within the boundaries of the city of Bridgeton, providing for the extension of said property tax on the books of the collector by the county clerk, and authorizing the St. Louis County Collector to collect said taxes. Move for tabling bill 6510.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther to table bill number 6510. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill number 6510 is tabled. No discussion items. Next item on the agenda is the attorney's report.
I have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lumberaker. Council communications. I'll start with Councilmember Westy tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, especially for staying this whole meeting. It's been a long one. And I did have one question for Mr. Gunn. About a month or so ago, we ended up having a trash truck from Republic Services blow a hydraulic line or something like that on that mechanic on Whitby Hall Drive, and in doing so, it ended up leaving a giant pool of oil there, which significantly stained the street. It also then tracked that oil throughout the neighborhood, and you can really see a pretty big stain going through that neighborhood. I've had a couple different neighbors ask me about it, see if there's anything we can do. I do know that within like an hour, we ended up having the Bridgeton Street crew out there putting what looked almost to be like kitty litter or something down. Is there any way that we can possibly fix that? I know the street's not that old there. It was nice and white before, and now it's really, really gray. So I was hoping Rain would possibly take care of it, but it has not.
Okay, I'll ask him to address that when it comes to his turn.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else?
No, back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Norris.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to thank Mr. Westy for chairing, being the new chair of the Business Partnership Committee. I appreciate that. I was at design and review, had a 12-minute meeting. It was a cell tower and a fence in Boston Farm, and they both passed. I want to thank you for passing the wall sign for the Best Wash Laundromat. Again, it's an awkward area. They are committed to working with Bridgeton, owning the business, I think is a great asset for us to have local ownership. I do have some questions regarding businesses on St. Charles Rock Road. I was going to give this to Brian last week, Robert, but he said you're going to be here this week. I'm just, and you don't have to give me an answer to counsel tonight, what is the status of the BP station, the China buffet, the India bazaar, and also, I was looking through some of my notes, we approved a design for the bridge over Natural Bridge. Are we, will be working on that, or are we waiting? Are we waiting for a grant to apply to have that work done? You don't, you can get back to us. I'm sorry I didn't give you advance warning. So if you can just give us, just check on this. And also, on October the twenty-fourth, we're having a chili cook-off competition. I just noticed that in this, the senior paper. It will be Pattonville Fire Department, the Bridgeton Recreation Center, and the Bridgeton City Council. Who's the cook? Who's doing that?
They asked me to.
Uh-oh.
I could sample.
Okay, so I didn't know who's going to be the cook and the competitor. And also, I just wanna thank Crystal for the help you've gave the City of Bridgeton during a difficult time. Your enthusiasm and take-charge attitude will be remembered and appreciated. And I am anxious to meet our new city clerk next week, Ms. Bridget Waters. So, thank you very much, and wow, this was a long meeting. Take care.
Thank you, Councilmember Norris. Councilmember Sutel?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The only thing I was gonna bring up is have a discussion possibly on our next meeting, if it's gonna be a change. That's all, thank you.
I think Mr. Bookout will address that.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. So first, thank you to Hush Blackwall for hosting us at the Cardinals versus the Pirates game. That was very nice. I'll reserve my comments about the winner. Go Pirates. Also, congratulations to Ms. Waters. Thank you for being here tonight, and we're looking forward to working with you. So, out on the screen, out in the lobby, are the councilmember pictures, and they're still scrolling last year's pictures. I had asked if we could get that updated to this year's pictures, and I see they're not there yet. So if I can get an update, or if we can get an update about whether or not this year's pictures are gonna be put back up there or not? And if they're not, why not? And if they're not going to be, then why do we pay to have them done? Let's see. I did attend the MML Training Academy session last week. It was a lunch and learn, and it was really informative. So if you get an opportunity, please go back and watch it, because it talked about everything that's applicable to what we're doing right now with our city code. Something was just left on the dais for you all tonight about the council rules changes. That's ordinance change. And Crystal has offered to do some training. They talked about flagging emergency, flagging emerging issues, generating discussion, providing framework. They talked about nuisance issues, native landscaping and prairie grasses, broadband initiatives, mixed-use development density, renewable energy, something that we've talked about recently, data centers, and other miscellaneous topics. So it was really informative. So again, I encourage you, if you get a chance, go back and watch that. You may have to get the password from the interim city clerk to be able to do so. Has, so a couple of questions. Has Public Works received data from the street survey that was done earlier this year? What is the status on the tablets for council? And then, last week was a RECA meeting. The mayor hosted Just Moms and some others. It was very informative, and I did see that it's online on Facebook, probably accessible from the Just Moms page. Lots of good questions asked, and lots of good answers coming as well. So if you do have any questions, anyone out there listening about filling out the RECA, there were a bunch of resources listed. Please, if you don't know what those resources are, please call. You're welcome to call me, and I took a screenshot of it. I'm happy to help. And then also, finally, next Tuesday, I believe it is, on the ninth, and Mr. Kane might speak to this. The Historical Commission Speaker is going to be St. Louis to Cooperstown. And I believe that's at six-thirty, but Mr. Kane can confirm. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ioana?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna mention, I love the new street signs on St. Charles Rock Road. I waited till nighttime to go look at them, and on my way home from the Cardinals game. And they look amazing, so a big shout-out to Public Works for getting that done. And also, while on the subject, thanks to Hush Blackwall for a nice evening. And I wanna also thank Crystal, and give her a big shout-out for stepping up and managing dual positions and doing it with grace and a smile. Well done, thank you. And congratulations to Ms. Waters, welcome to the City of Bridgeton family. We look forward to working with you. That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Luther?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. First, thank you all for being here tonight. The audience shrunk as the meeting went by, but thank you. And I wanna also, and all of you who are serving on boards, thank you for, and commissions, thank you for your service. Wanna thank representatives from the EPA, it's good to see you. We're very excited to move this project along, as you probably are too. I take it that means you'll still have a job? So, right, okay, good, good. So, looking forward to any meetings that you have, or anything that we can share with our constituents, with our residents. It's great to see new businesses either moving along in their construction or opening. We've had several. Wanna spread the word about some of our upcoming events. We have a concert in the park, I think, on, what, Saturday? The night? Sunday? Sunday, thank you. And we have Fall Fest coming up later this month, so spread the word about those. And I do, I do wanna make note of Mr. Trippi's audit report. There are some ongoing issues. They have, they're long-going issues and ongoing issues that were noted, that he noted, that were noted in all of our, the audit materials that we received. And I would like to ask that staff have a plan for addressing those and remediating those by November first, if possible, just a plan to address them, not necessarily addressing them all, but a plan to do so. And I too thank Crystal for everything, but for so kindly offering assistance for reading SUPs, for reading subs. Much appreciated.
That it? Thank you. Councilmember Patel?
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty much everybody said everything I was gonna say, so at the risk of sounding redundant, I won't. But, the only thing I do have is when it comes to Chief's turn to talk, if I could just get police staffing update. That would be all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna start with Mr. Kane, Parks and Rec Director. Staff report?
Yeah, the Historical Commission Speaker is Ed Wheatley, and that is Tuesday, September ninth, at six-thirty PM at the Rec Center. He's a St. Louis baseball historian. The dog swim is this Saturday, one to three PM at the outdoor pool. Quick reminder on that, must have the vaccinations submitted for that. The fall plant giveaway is next Saturday, September thirteenth, nine to ten AM at the outdoor pool. Mums will be the plant being given away. And we ask that you bring a non-perishable food item and resident card for that event. And then finally, a couple of Rec Center closures. The gymnasium's been closed this week, we're refinishing the floor, the gym floor. And will be closed this Friday for two hours or so while we repair the backflow.
Mr. Kane, can you let us know what the time of the concert? Is it six to eight, or seven to nine?
The concert is six PM, six to eight PM, trilogy.
Thank you.
This Sunday.
Any questions of Mr. Kane? Thank you, sir. Chief Masadi?
Just wanted to pass along, we, last meeting, I had announced that we were gonna be selling T-shirts for Special Olympics at Schnucks. That has been moved to the weekend of Friday, September twelfth, four PM to eight PM, and Saturday, September thirteenth, from ten AM to six PM. So, that's the only change. That's, that's all I have. Just on staffing, we're at forty-nine officers right now. That's where our staffing's at.
Any further questions of the chief? I see none. Okay, Mr. Gunn, you're on.
All right, I'll try to make this quick. Bad news, trash truck issues. That stain's gonna be there for probably till the spring. Republic did get the truck taken away, and we went out and helped them, tried to soak up as much oil as possible. Once that oil gets in the concrete, you really can't do anything other than let Mother Nature kind of have at it, let the UV light kind of break it up. I would imagine after a nice hard winter assault, and we get some calcium chloride on there, it'll kind of lighten up over time, so. They did go out there, we tried to get them as much as possible to limit the staining. As far as the shops that are closed, or businesses closed on the Rock Road, no update on that. If you have any particular questions, just give me a call. The one that's lightning-fast oil change place, we did cut their grass and trimmed their trees back and removed a lot of trash that was dropped off in that parking lot at the cost of right around two thousand four hundred dollars. The owner of the company was very unhappy, so they called immediately. So at least they are engaging with us. We went round and round as far as how they needed to pay that. I told them I didn't really care. If I didn't get the money soon, we were gonna go ahead and put a lien on the property. Two days later, we did get a check, so that was a good thing. So they're all paid up now. And I would imagine after the unpleasant tree of getting a bill for cutting their grass of over two thousand dollars, it probably behooves them to find somebody local and get that done a little quicker themselves. So we're hoping that take a, that takes a little precedent, a little higher precedent with them in the future. Let's see, what else do we got? Street survey, they're still working on that, so that, the whole report's pending. The design on the Natural Bridge Road project, or the bridge, that's still under, under the many months of taking the design on engineering. It's probably a little bit more complicated than they were originally thinking, because they're not able to raise the bridge up because of the new requirements that MDNR has. So they're still going through the design. It's gonna be a little while, and we won't build anything till we have a grant in hand, so. Last thing I have is some good news. The hotel, I think it was Old Quality Inn behind the Waffle House, today they passed both our inspections for Public Works, and more importantly, the fire district's inspections. They put a brand-new sprinkler and system in. Will they open up anytime in the near future? Probably, do I know it exactly? No, I know they're still working on getting their new flag put up. They're going with Baymont, and there's some requirements they still need to finish up. But the big requirements that Baymont had was they wanted occupancy from the City of Bridgeton for the final inspection, and more importantly, the fire district had to pass. So that's coming up, which is good, we finally got a new hotel reopening, is the main thing. It's been closed for almost, I think, three years. So it's nice to have them opening again. And that's all I have.
Any further questions of Mr. Gunn? I see none. City Ministerator Kevin Bookout?
There was a email sent to you all by Christine related to the pension training course that's required as trustees of the city's pension. The two dates on those were September eighteenth and October seventh. And I believe in those emails, she had requested that you get ahold of her this week. We can RSVP and get a check sent, depending on which one you wanna go to. So if, you'll just send her an email, that would be great. Let her know which one you wanna attend. The bright sign, I've sent an email, I'm gonna have Crystal work with Tom, and we'll get those updated. We, in the last couple of weeklies, I've mentioned possibly moving the council meeting from the third to the fourth week of September to accommodate the real property rate numbers that we're anticipating getting in the third week. If we leave the meeting on the seventeenth, there's a possibility that we may not have the numbers, and we would have to do a special meeting the following week. So, the thought was that we just push the meeting back and took to the twenty-fourth, from the seventeenth to the twenty-fourth, to avoid having to have a special meeting. And I know some of you we've, we've heard from, and I just wanted to get the council's thoughts on having the meeting, the regular meeting on the twenty-fourth, and avoiding the possibility of having to schedule a special meeting, because those numbers are due to the county by the end of September.
Okay. All in favor of making the change of the second council meeting in September to the twenty-fourth?
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we move the September seventeenth council meeting to the twenty-fourth.
Second?
Okay, motion's made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther, to move the September seventeenth council meeting to the following week, on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. We'll meet on the twenty-fourth. Okay, very good, thank you.
One last thing. There was a question about the tablets. We, we have got numbers. I've been working with Mr. Rickard on the tablets for the paperless packets. That is gonna be the easy part, we can have the tablets. We've got pricing for tablets and keyboards, so that's not a problem. But we have talked with our incoming city clerk, and that's gonna be one of the first projects that we, we run with once she is here, so that we can look at the software. There's been some consolidation of some of those companies, so we're gonna take a look at that right away and see if we can't move on that. But the tablets, in talking with Tom, we can literally have here in, in a matter of days. So that's not a problem.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Luke, you had your light on before.
It's been answered, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sutel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. With that approval of our council meeting going to the twenty-fourth, I wanna make sure that our records show that we can actually move our ward meeting that was scheduled for that night a week earlier and have it on the seventeenth, and replace that. So if we can make sure that, it's not gonna be on the calendar, but maybe we can post it on the online calendar, you know, for Ward One, still in this chamber. You know, we're just kind of, what we did was swap the dates around, so.
Okay.
You know, just wanna make sure that's gonna be open to the public, and they know that, and so, which is just next, you know, next one, yeah.
Good, I suggest you get together with Ms. Hilton and make sure one of the rooms is available, and get that scheduled.
Okay. Well, it's not scheduled for nothing else, 'cause it was scheduled for a council meeting until just a minute ago, so it should be available.
She, she has, and you email her?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Luke, again?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that we do have the MML conference that week, starting on Sunday, the fourteenth, and ending on the morning of Wednesday, the seventeenth.
Next item on the agenda, Mayor's report. Thank you, council, administration, department heads, and the audience, once again, for the, your patience during this lengthy meeting. Nice seeing you, retired councilmember Grimmer and Mrs. Grimmer, Mr. and Ms. Hartog, Ms. Haug. EPA representatives, thanks for being here. Christine, thanks for your hard work again on the audit. Mr. Boji, hello? Okay. Our finance officer distributed the financial reports as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Make sure you have a copy in your basket, if you haven't picked it up already. Staff, our legal representative, Mykolas, and myself will be meeting with the owner of Cypress Village Apartments and Chateau de Monde Apartments tomorrow regarding increasing code violations not being addressed, and many unhappy residents. Just wanna let you know about that. On a positive note, the average sale price of ten homes sold in Bridgeton in August was three hundred and twelve dollars. We did sponsor the RECA meeting that Councilmember Luke alluded to earlier at the Rec Center last week. There were about a hundred and forty individuals in attendance, and everybody was pleased with the attendance and with the outcome and the information. Don't forget about Holy Spirit's Carnival this weekend, Friday and Saturday. Mr. Kane covered the Historical Commission Speaker next Tuesday. Mr. Gunn, the Public Works Director, has been working on an Excel spreadsheet that lists violations, code violations that have been reported since about the middle of July. He's putting that together, and will include that with his high-grass list in the next weekly report. This week or the following week? One of the two. He's compiling that list. Council's been asking for that, so we can see where we are with code violations. A bill will be introduced probably at the next council meeting with the attached contract regarding council's approval of social media services. This will afford the city a greater awareness and presence in and outside of the community. the community as to what Bridgeton is all about and has to offer. I want to tell you about a thank-you note that I received from City Clerk Karen Robinson's family. Very nicely written, and it was addressed to myself, the employees, and council members, thanking us all for our kind condolences during their, their time of sadness and need. I will ask our HR Coordinator to enter this into Karen's personnel file. The Comprehensive Plan Draft is available. Zach Greitens will be distributing that to council and also to the Planning Commission and the Planning Comprehensive Plan Committee tomorrow. So he's going to ask that you provide your comments or suggested changes by Friday, the 12th of September. The Economic Development Advisory Commission met last week, I mean, last night, Tuesday night. They're again talking about exterior inspections for home occupancy, and I believe the city attorney addressed that with me a couple of weeks ago. There's some language that needs to be changed in our current ordinance, so we can once again begin doing exterior, exterior home inspections when homes are sold. Please pardon the construction that's going on in the lobby. That's our new Public Works Receptionist Information Area. It's going to be about a two-and-a-half to three-month project, so keep that in mind. Councilmember Norris, you did not mention the Kwanis Luncheon Barbecue.
Yes.
I believe that is on the 11th of September.
Right.
And that is out of BMAC.
BMAC. And they just need, it will be, Kwanis is providing barbecue, pork steaks and chicken, and the attendees are, if they can bring a side dish or dessert, would be helpful. And I do also have a situation. Are you sending invitations out for the commission's dinner? Okay.
Yes.
Just verify.
We're working on that.
All right. Thank you very much.
And that barbecue is for seniors, correct? 60 and over?
Yes.
Okay.
Senior.
And I believe they're looking for RSVPs, do they?
They need to call Ms. Nider Schulte's office.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Last council meeting, under my mayor's report, I mentioned the Ronald Reagan quote. The most terrifying words in the English language are, "I'm from the government, and I'm here to help." My take on that is, I don't want these to be terrifying words to any of our residents, and we're all working together to make sure residents are comfortable with, with working with all of us. That's my take on how that applies to our own municipality here in Bridgeton. If you have any other thoughts, I'd like to hear them, you know, sometime. But I'm going to ask for a motion for adjournment.
Second?
Motion's made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Washi, to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Meeting's adjourned.